Gentlemen, I call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone here for our October the ninth, two thousand twenty-five board meeting. Our first item on our agenda today would be an invocation by Pastor Corey Kiss.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
If you would like to join me in prayer with me and my gracious and sovereign God, we thank you for the gift of this day, for the opportunity to be gathering service to our community. And as this board means to consider the matters before it, we ask for your presence to guide every discussion, every decision, grant wisdom and discernment to each member of this board, and to all who offer counsel and support. May their words be marked by clarity and fairness, their listening by patience and understanding, and their actions by integrity and a sincere desire to serve the common good. In moments of unity and in times of difference, may mutual respect and civility prevail, strengthen the shared commitment of all present to work for the welfare and the prosperity of every person who called this county home. So we pray that you address this meeting, oh Lord, and may the word published here today reflect justice and compassion and good stewardship of the trust that has been placed in these leaders. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Kiss. All right, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the land of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. All right, the next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? If we don't, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Could we take the, Mr. Long, before we get a second on it, could we, could we take the convene and the closed meeting, move that to the very end? That's all right, go. All right. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is approval of the minutes. We got the September nine, two twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Any changes or deletions to that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I got a motion, got a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, got September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Any changes, deletions, additions? Not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we got September the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, September the twenty-fourth. Any changes to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, October the first, two thousand twenty-five. Any changes to that meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all gentlemen. All right, next is presentations. We have one here from Northumberland County Public School Boosters Club and J R O T C update.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Christian Sharillo, I was just here a few weeks ago telling you about the Booster Club. I got a quick update and then I want to turn it over to another Booster Club that was forming the same time we were unbeknownst to us. So we're just bringing some positive news from the school system. I'm sure that Ms. Ashton will share more later on. Our Booster Club has been raising money for the, since midsummer, in hopes of putting, putting some funds back into all competitive programs in the school. As of late, we had not funding come through us, but through a connection in the Booster Club, we were able to get a new school, or new school, school board, school board, scoreboard, new scoreboard put up at the football field. So I hope everybody will come out later tonight or next Friday for homecoming and check it out. It looks fantastic and just super proud of that, that connection. We've got more initiatives on the way and currently we are working to spread just some general school spirit and raise a little money through a tacky toilet event that is going on now. And I have, under good authority, that Major Allen's address is on that list. If you all know, the toilet lands in a friend's yard. He's shaking his head. That may or may not be true. Anyway, good things are happening through our Booster Club and I'm gonna turn it over to the J R O T C boosters, who we are beginning to work with collaboratively. And our first big project together will be a dinner auction sometime in two thousand twenty-six. So Jen Downing and Meredith Pearson.
Hi, nice to see you guys. So we represent the R O T C boosters. We are there to put some energy back into the things that they can do outside of what their budget is for the school. So we've been doing some fundraising already. We have something going on. We're doing a barbecue tailgate for homecoming. We'll be on the parade route, so please do support that. It will go directly to the R O T C cadets. Some of the goals that they have are to finish their obstacle course so that they can have events and they can do things that support that program. It's a great program. You learn a lot of leadership skills. It's very good for these kids to be able to learn hierarchies of, you know, how do you climb the ladder and life skills and leadership skills. So we really believe it's a, it's a valid thing. The cadets, there's eighty-five or so cadets. They range from all of the clubs in the school, sports, clubs, all of those things. So that's why we want to work collaboratively, to bring some school spirit, to bring some visibility to that, because they've got things like drone teams and raiders that do all these activities and they need to be able to pay for those competitions and things that really benefit the cadets. So that's why we're here. We definitely were excited to see that Christian and his group were embracing that as well. So we just wanted to bring some visibility to that collaboration and we hope to see you guys at some of these events. So thank you.
The R O T C boosters, as we are affectionately referred to as the Battle Moms, and if anybody knows me, they know exactly why. The R O T C program is the largest extracurricular program in Northumberland County public school systems and they have exactly zero dollars in county budget. So we exist and we have now teamed up with the booster, the Northumberland boosters, for the purposes of raising all of the monies to do all of the things, all of the things, because there is no money for any of the things. We just wanted to provide visibility, as Jen says, for those things and we wanted to, counting on notice, that Jen needed paying attention, because we're gonna do lots of fundraising events, all sorts of things to promote that program, which is invaluable to all of our cadets, eighth grade through twelve. Thank you.
All right. Hold on just a second. Hold on. Any, any board members have any questions?
Explain the tacky toilet fundraiser, please.
Giant green potty, front yard.
There's gold ones too. The idea is, they're just, they're two toilets, literally, that were decorated in school colors. They're very tacky, tacky, tacky man. And so they, I think they started in Bubba's yard, not in Rita's. And then Bubba had to pay to have them removed, but he got to choose where they were moved and placed. And then the next person pays to have them. So you basically pay to have a toilet in the front yard. I think one is sitting across the street right now, in real life place. I wanted to pay to put it there. I said, Major Allen's yard, Mary, not the office.
Contact number?
Say again?
What's a good phone number?
If you, if you find us, Northumberland Booster's one, Facebook.
Okay.
Message us there.
If anyone would like Mr. Brand's address down Monday Point, I haven't.
Hey, 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 watch, I know where you live too.
We had no idea how it was gonna be received and one of our agent members took it, took the bullet off Lawrence and ran with it. And there's been a lot of trouble going online and everybody's, everybody's participating to support the kids, so.
Awesome. Can't you also participate by buying insurance that will block?
You can, you can. For a hundred dollars, you can prevent the toilet from landing in your yard. If Major Allen's to write a check right now, it's too late. How many dollars I got picked out? Is he sitting next to you? No. Anyway, it's been a full receipt program and I think it's probably raised fifteen hundred dollars so far. So fifteen hundred dollars is a long way to supporting any of the other programs, sports, crack. Any other questions about the toilet?
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, no, I don't think so. Thank you all.
How far do you, how far do you travel?
How far do you travel?
Yep.
Well, well, for fifty dollars would be in Northumberland County, but you can find a check picker, he'll take it anyway you want it.
No, no problem. Mr. Gregory, you gonna be safe on this?
You sure?
That's a long trip.
Text me his address.
Only one I got is the office number.
That's good enough.
That's good enough. All right, next is the Health Department carryover request.
Good evening, Brendan Rupart, Health Director of the Bridge Health District. I live in Middlesex, so I don't know if I'm outside of that service area for having toilets put in my yard, but just give me a heads up if anybody makes any requests. We are requesting to carry forward about ten thousand five hundred dollars of surplus from fiscal year twenty-five into our current operating budget. The reason we faced a surplus last year, the agency imposed, it's twofold, the agency imposed a hiring, or a spending freeze mostly through the spring as a result of some shifting and churn in federal funding across the entire EDH. And then in addition to that, of no fault to the local health department, the county, or the local health district, or the agency, a few months of rent bills and a few months of IT bills were not, did not hit our final fiscal year twenty-five expenditures. So those costs are being carried forward into this current fiscal year. So we are requesting that that surplus be pushed over this year and operationally, instead of us issuing the county a refund check, we would hold on to that money to hit those expenses. It wouldn't change the amount that the health department invoices the county for the current fiscal year, as approved by the board earlier this year.
All right, all right, any board members have any questions? No questions? Mr. Tadlock, you have any other comments on this?
Just, just for clarification, the Health Department budget is sent to the Health Department on a quarterly basis and the fiscal year twenty-five quarterly payments have been made. So this money is with the, the Health Department. It's not additional money that is being requested. That money has already been sent to the Health Department.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any questions, comments from the board, or what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the carryover request.
Second.
Put your amount in there, please.
Sorry?
Put the amount in.
The amount of?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand five hundred, three dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right. Mr. Long, you second that. All right, any other, any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next is an update from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal, good to see you, sir.
Hey, it's good to be seen.
Yes, you, you are correct. Good to be seen, straight up.
Right. They would visit, cut and brush on Fluke, Fluke Lane, Lively Hook, Out Town, Stony Lane, Whole Harbor, and Newman's Neck, a clean ditch on three sixty, clean pipes on Lighthouse View, and completed the asphalt patching on Lighthouse View today. Received a nice note from those folks and passed that on to those crews. The crews really did a good job on that, I thought. And I appreciate the recognition from the homeowner. The secondary mowing and litter removal is about fifty percent complete and we're keeping up with potholes and work orders and incidents countywide. We have some disc lane to do and lake laning. There's some pipes we've been putting off for a while, but we're gonna get to here in the next thirty days. We have some shoulder repairs on cone stage, brush cutting on Lewisetta, Cowards, and Dr. Ford. The primary mowing starts on the twenty-second. We're gonna keep up with potholes and work orders. The plant mix schedule is mostly complete now. They finished the rest of the reflectors, the pavement markers today. They still have some shoulders done to do and some punchless items to complete, but it should be completed by next month, medium. Last update I'll give you is tomorrow, on the tenth, effective on the tenth, the superintendent position in Locksbury will be vacant. Todd has accepted a position in the residency as a maintenance operations manager. So he'll come to work directly for me in the residency and we have an interview scheduled for a new superintendent in Locksbury tomorrow, so some change in leadership there. Todd will oversee the maintenance program and then all the superintendents in five counties will report directly to him. That's my update for you all.
All right, gentlemen, you have any, anything from Mr. Beal?
I do not.
Mr. Long?
Yes, update of six nine eight, six nine eight. You know, that's the school, you know, that, some type of traffic device coming out of there. Have a chance to review that.
Yeah, forwarded the signal warrant to Mr. Tadlock after the last meeting. It doesn't meet warrants for a signal.
With all that traffic coming out of there, still there?
Yeah.
Seem like it'd be something that could be put there. You know, we had, had an ice step one deputy getting in. So show where the help is, we could relieve that.
And I can send you the, the analysis that was done, but it doesn't, it doesn't meet the warrants, it doesn't international warrants for signals. Beyond that, there's already a turn lane. I think roundabout could be an option, but you're gonna have to figure out where to pay for it. Which revenue sharing is probably the most logical funding program that I heard, which requires a fifty percent local match.
Whatever you can do, just within reason, I'd like to see you move on.
Mr. Beal, what's the average cost for roundabout?
I couldn't tell you.
Couldn't tell you.
The time we recorded right away, new utilities, several million dollars.
Several million. Yeah, pretty much one. That's, I was one, knew it to be at least that much. Okay. All right, would you send that information to Mr. Tadlock and he will send it to us on the, on what your study was?
Yeah, that, that was sent on nine twelve, the day after.
All right, nine twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me know if you need, I can resend it if you'd like.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Long?
I said.
Mr. Brand, you got anything?
I kind of agree with Mr. Long. There are times, law enforcement is tied up, they don't have enough resources to stay at that, stay there at that intersection to help your parents get in and out. And, you know, I can't help what a study says, but sometimes common sense has got to come into place. That's a bad intersection.
Yes, it is.
We need to try to take that a little bit farther and see what we can do to, see if we can get in the light there.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll, I'll agree with you on that. Anything else, Mr. Brand?
No.
Mr. Fisher?
Nope.
All right. Mr. Beal, I got one thing. Down there on Route two hundred, and we're Good Luck Road, right there, where y'all tied the tar into the, the new paving into the old paving. Get a lot of complaints about that bump there.
Are you talking about the dip where we replaced the pipe on two hundred?
No, it's right at, right at Good Luck Road and two hundred. It's where y'all did some paving here, wasn't this year, I think it was last year.
Okay.
That dip in there, that bump is getting worse and worse all the time. And a lot of people are complaining about it. A lot of the truck drivers don't like it because they hit that. It's not bad going to Kilmarnock. Coming from Kilmarnock is where it really is bad. So I don't know if you can do something about that. I know I'm up and down there probably ten, fifteen times every week or more.
Right in the intersection.
It's, all right, if you are coming out of Good Luck Road onto two hundreds, right to the right, right there, it's right at the intersection.
Okay.
Yeah. Go down and check that out and I, and I think you'll see what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what you can do to, to make it a little bit better, but when you're coming from Kilmarnock, it really is a good bump.
I'm gonna check it out.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, next is a, let's see, Operation Ceasefire Grant, Sheriff's Department. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, how you doing, sir?
Doing fine. Thank you all for having me here. My name is Caleb Smith. I'm the detective sergeant at the Northumberland County Sheriff's Office and I'm here tonight to request a grant approval from you fine gentlemen. I think Mr. Hayden is pulling up a PowerPoint I've sent you as well. And I've also provided you a small info sheet that I'll be referring to as well. I encourage you gentlemen to ask me any questions you have. Some of the things that specifically this grant will be requesting may be a little bit in the weeds, but I'm, I'll, I'll be happy to explain to you how useful it would be to us in our investigation.
Okay.
Mr. Hayden, go before, please. So Operation Ceasefire is a state initiative to specifically combat violent crime, to try to stop local violent cycles of violence. For us at Northumberland, we're gonna be manning, we're gonna be using it for training and equipment that we believe will result in better investigations, better prosecutions, and getting violent offenders off the streets and out of our community. There are two grants that currently exist. There's the Operation Ceasefire Grant, which you'll see referred to as OCG, and then a separate grant that is an Operation Ceasefire Grant, forensic and analytical technology, which will be notated with OCG forensic. Forward if you will, sir. The two grants are on two different timeframes. Both of them are gonna start calendar year, not fiscal year. Both of them start calendar year, January one, two thousand twenty-six, coming up. The OCG funding, which is the, the main one, is for a three-year period. The forensic funding opportunity is for a two-year period. Let's go forward, sir. The maximum amount of award for the OCG grant, the, the main one is five hundred thousand dollars per agency, with the caveat that requests and equipment cannot exceed one hundred thousand dollars. That will not apply for us. And then the forensic one is, the maximum award is for three hundred thousand dollars. The recipients, this is critical for everybody to understand, that the recipients are not required to provide matching funds. This is on a reimbursement basis. The county will purchase the equipment on the front side every quarter. Any purchases that are made against the grant in that quarter are reported. I spoke with a representative from DCJS this afternoon and she assured me that once that quarterly report goes in by the deadline, so I think the first one for quarter one, two thousand twenty-six, is April fifteenth, the county will reimburse within, be reimbursed within weeks, within a few weeks was her direct quote, after that comes in. And then all obligations will be fulfilled no later than forty-five days after the grant period. Once you guys see what we're, what we're looking at here, there's not gonna be any kind of ongoing, it's pretty much one hit, let's get this equipment and start using it. So I'm not anticipating that being any issue whatsoever. Again, our focus is gonna be on two things, training and then the forensic analytical technology. We have, at Northumberland, have done a lot with our training curriculum to improve our officers, improve our investigations, and we're really seeing the fruits of that being born in the prosecutions that we have now, the capabilities that we have now within the detective suite and also patrol, as far as what we're able to do in criminal investigations, especially compared to years in the past. And we want to continue to push to improve upon those aspects. First thing we're gonna ask for, and the vast majority of what this grant will be requesting, is this piece of equipment here. This is the Forenscope Super Spectral, and the price tag on this, and the X ray on that, I've had been able to get that quote extended through January of two thousand twenty-six, so into the life of the grant, is this piece of equipment. Now, this is a, works and operates more or less like a camera. The difference is, is that what it allows you to do is that it photographs through, just beyond the visible spectrum of what we as humans can see. So in law enforcement, you guys have all seen on CSI, use blue lights and UV lights and all this kind of stuff, and it makes things appear that you can't see with the naked eye. The issue that we have in the equipment we currently have is that it does take some special training to use that. I went through the forensic academy recently and received all form of light source training as part of that course. That is not something that my other detectives have. And additionally, all we have currently at the sheriff's office is blue light and UV, which is good for body fluids. The thing with this one is that not only will this be able to photograph and show what that is in and of itself, it'll be able to document it in a high resolution image that is usable in court all day long. It also presents the entire light spectrum that we would need to use. That, the applicator for this is beyond just body fluids and crime scenes. What we would also be able to see is, one of the biggest things that I'm looking for is some, some dermal bruising. So when you have assaults or strangulations, so many times, unfortunately, those cases become he said, she said. What this will allow us to do is using the filters on it, as well as the light source that it generates, we will be able to see bruising that the naked eye cannot see, bettering our cases and helping our victims get justice in court. Additionally, what it will allow you to find is gunshot residue. That, as, as currently for us to find gunshot residue at a crime scene, we have to take a kit, we scrub everything we think it might be on, we send it to the Department of Forensic Science, and then they'll tell us whether there's gunshot residue. I spoke with the Department of Forensic Science last week and they are, their gunshot residue, their current batch that they're working on are from June two thousand twenty-four. This will allow us to see it on scene and document it on scene, real time. And then lastly, and Mr. Hayden, I'll pick on you for this one, you have seen me fingerprint before and you're aware that it does make a little mess. This will also allow us to document one-to-one measurements for latent prints on some, on some objects, not everything. But this would mean we wouldn't have to power all over people's houses anytime we need to get fingerprints. It is, that stuff is hard to get off. What we can actually do is take that picture because of how this machine works and submit that photograph to the Department of Forensic Science, not having to worry about messing up a fingerprint and getting it wrong, screwing up evidence because the wind's just wrong or the powder doesn't catch right. All of that is with this equipment. Westmoreland County currently has one. I spoke with the first art of Atlantic Ham over there. They use it on nearly every single crime scene. This is something that for us would not only improve on the equipment we currently have, but would open new aspects to our investigations and make us better. We'll do the next one, sir. The next one is a Polycam iPad application. This is four hundred dollars a year, annual subscription per device. I will make a note that the grant will only pay for it within the life of the grant, which this would be under the forensic grant, it'd be for two years. The county would have the option, through the sheriff's office budget, to pick it up after that if we're finding that we're using it. What this does is our, the detective suite has iPads that have LiDAR in it, which means that it can actually take spatial measurements within the three D environment. So instead of us standing at a crime scene and spending hours sometimes taking photographs and then also measuring individual pieces of evidence within the crime scene, we're gonna get it just right, you stand there with an iPad, you hold it up, and you walk around. And it creates a complete three D rendering of the crime scene that we can hand off to a prosecutor, we can hand it to a defense attorney. And instead of them looking at thirty pictures trying to get an idea of what a crime scene looks at, looks like, we can show it to them. This is the same technology that is used for those of you that are anywhere close to the real estate market, if you've seen like the three D tours and that kind of thing, same kind of technology. This is more or less. This is more or less the standard that we're seeing in agencies in Richmond. Henrico, I know, uses it prolifically. I want to try to bring that here to Northumberland again, so we can better our own crime scene investigations. Next one, sir. The next thing, this, so these, both of those that I've just talked about are going to be under the forensic grant. Again, the cap for that is $300, $300,000. This comes below that. And again, the bulk of it being the Super Spectral. This is for training equipment under the traditional OCG grant. This is for protective equipment for helmets. We've been able to acquire over the past few years a number of simulated firearms or sim guns, as they're sometimes known. And we've been able to use these to really amp up our trainings and make them hyper-realistic. Our, if I can, as a point of pride, for me personally, I run our active shooter trainings at schools. Those trainings, as we put them on now, I, we've had to cap the classes. We, I, the last two, two or three times I've done it, I've had 30 cops in there where I've capped it from other agencies. It's one of the highest-reviewed classes that we, it is the, I think the highest-reviewed class we get in Northumberland. One of the highest-reviewed classes that the academy puts on through us. A big portion of that is that we use these sim guns. We use them to create realistic training environments. However, all we currently have for protective equipment for officers using, we have five masks. These are paintball masks. These aren't overpriced, you know, riot shield companies. They're paintball masks. But under this grant, using this, these monies to supplement that, we will be able to outfit that entire class. Also having that training equipment to use as we work on other tactical trainings to make sure our officers are equipped if and when that real situation happens, they will have training that as closely mirrors it as we can get. And the next one, sir. The last one is, we want to send a detective through the Virginia Gang Investigators Association training. What this will do, and I myself have gone through this training and am a certified gang specialist. In my role as a detective on the Intensive A Narcotics and Gang Task Force, I served in this capacity. I am no longer in that position. It's now filled by Detective Parker. I want to send Detective Parker through this class. It has a number of benefits. Number one, it explicitly teaches you how to investigate gang cases. And we through our basic academy and through most, unless you go through this kind of specialized training, it's not information that you get otherwise. He will grab them out of that with a certification as a gang specialist, which is one step on his road to be able to provide expert testimony in court on gang-related cases as they are necessary. I've laid out the prices for you below. This was, these were quoted from me speaking with the VGIA representative. They haven't had the one for this year yet, but obviously this grant doesn't come to play until January 1st. But these are the costs that she gave me is what she's expecting, and that's what they reflect. Go to the next one, sir. Ultimately, these are the costs that we're looking at. As I said before, the bulk of this money is going to be for the Forenscope. But I would again remind you, gentlemen, this is a, you know, there's no local match here. This money is reimbursed on a quarterly basis. The majority of this will be spent and then recovered quarter one, January of, of 2026, of correction, of calendar year 2026, which would be quarter three fiscal year, is that correct, Mr. Telemann? And then reimbursing thereafter. After that first expenditure, the only thing we'll have is in the fall, we will have Detective Parker going to the gang conference and the training. And then, then subsequent January will be the second year of the Polycam subscription for $400. I think there's one more, sir. And then, yeah, finally, this part, which I explained, explained before. And just an example, again, the first quarter would end April 15th, so when that will be due. Next slide, sir. And then ultimately, these are the timelines. The grant timeline, as I will point out to you gentlemen, is tomorrow. We found out about this grant two weeks ago. So it was a rush to try to get this information before you gentlemen. I understand this is a tight turnaround and a tight timeframe. However, I felt this was an opportunity we needed to try to take, to try to get this equipment because we don't know what cases we're going to get tomorrow. The final grant award will be on September 4th, 2025. And, but both grants will begin on January 1st. And I think there's one more slide, sir? Nope, that's it. But gentlemen, I welcome any questions you guys have.
Mr. Smith, all this equipment that you were talking about, it is currently accepted by the courts?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have any other questions?
Do we have much gang activity in the county or drug activity?
It's, it's a fair question, sir. So what we've seen since 2019 is not necessarily an increase in gang activity in the way that people will most often think of it. When people say gang activity, generally people think the gangs you all know and love. It's the Hells Angels and Bloods and Crips and so on and so forth. While we do not see, have not seen an increase in that specific activity, we've seen an increase in what would qualify as gang crimes. This is groups acting in concert to enact violence or commit other crimes. We have seen an increase in this. Thankfully, that is on decline as of recently. But we've, we have seen an increase in, I believe, cases that would qualify under gang statutes.
How about drug activity?
Drug activity tends to fall the same line. These are not trends that are unique to Northumberland County. COVID really did a number on us as a nation statewide, where since 2019, particularly 2020, when things kind of took off during lockdowns, is when you saw a statewide increase in crime. That is starting to join them now. But that, that ultimately, that increase statewide is the purpose for this grant and why the state has put it out. This is, I believe, the second iteration of this grant. I want to say it started in 2021 or 2022.
Last one. Have you had any activity in the schools with drugs?
No. Thankfully, from, from, from my knowledge and my understanding, talking with SROs and my involvement in the school system, we have not seen any kind of increased activity. Generally, what we see is, is what, what professors would call the age of criminality, you know, under, under the age of 25. But our, our schools do a outstanding job of monitoring the situation within their walls. And I, I have had no reports or other indications of any gang activity or otherwise in the school system.
Is Westmoreland County the only nearby county that's using that Super Spectral device?
The only nearby, Forenscope, because they're trying to sell it, provided a list of agencies that are using it. It is used multiple places statewide. Langston County has a device that is, it's called, it's made by the same company, but it's a smaller device that only does fingerprints. The Super Spectral, which is what Westmoreland uses and what we're requesting, they, as I said before, they, they use it almost every crime scene. They could not say enough good things about how useful the piece of equipment was. One of the things I'll point out to me is that you could literally stand at the entrance of a crime scene, hold it to your eye, and look around the crime scene. And things would pop out at you. That's a really incredible.
You're going to need a answer on this today, correct?
Yes, sir.
You made it mention the bulk of this expense would be in January. So you're going to purchase camera, cameras, so the reimbursement would be that kind of, pretty quick?
Yes, sir. The cameras, helmets, and the first-year subscription for the Polycam will come out in, in January.
So probably February, March, we have reimbursement back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright, gentlemen, any other questions?
So then the only new money after that would be the subscriptions to the, the Polycam iPad?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes. And, and I would posit too, if we find that through the use of this, that we're not using that program as efficiently as we would, and in my role as a detective sergeant, I would not request that continued from the sheriff if we're not actually taking use out of it.
Right.
Alright, gentlemen. Staff, have any questions? Alright, what's the pleasure, the board?
Well, we got to look at this thing. It could be mandated in the future. Then you're going to buy it out of county funds. It's a grant. The only thing it's going to do is tie some county funds up for a couple of months. Mr. Tadlock, we got that, that money? We have money to...
Yes, sir. The good thing about this, the reimbursement timeframe is a short window.
So no matching funds?
No matching.
I think I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the grant.
I'll second it.
Alright, got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Gentlemen, there you go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Sheriff Beach?
Good to see you tonight.
Good to be seeing you. I heard early.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you're certainly correct. Alright, next is an update on Northumberland County schools.
Good evening to the board. I'm Javon Ashton, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Ms. Ashton.
Good evening. We have quite a few things to present to you. I will start with the appropriation of the funds for transportation. I know we have a PowerPoint. While that's being brought up, I'd like to invite you all to our homecoming on October the 17th. We'll have a parade and then, of course, the football game. And I also would like to share with you that we have just celebrated our three building, 25, 26 teachers of the year from the elementary school, Brantley Swift, the middle school, Mary Ambrose, and the high school, Rob Etsel. So I wanted to share that, all the hard work and the great things that those teachers are doing. Alright. So tonight, I'm going to present to you or request appropriation of the funds for funding that's been earmarked for transportation. Specifically, I'll be presenting to you amounts that we received on two used buses, as well as an engine that will allow us to, to put three buses back into, into rotation for our students. If you go to the next slide. Originally, we had requested $52,000 for two used buses about a month or so ago, but the quotes came back and the actual purchases were $20,000 for each bus. So we're looking at $40,000 for two buses from the vendor, Sunny Merriman. You'll take the next slide, please. So originally, I believe that the earmarked transportation funds was about $200,000. A bus was purchased back in 2023 in an amount of $125,000. I believe it was a sped bus, leaving a balance of a little over $74,000. So we're requesting $40,000 for the two used buses, which leaves us a balance of a little over $34,000. Next slide, please. And we received quotes for an engine for one of our buses that needs an engine replacement from those quotes. We'd like to go with the XL Truck Group, which is at 366-3599, which leaves us a balance, if you go to the next slide, about, of about $1,900, which we would then use the funding from our transportation budget for the remaining balance of, for that engine. So tonight, we're requesting use of the full funds of the $74,731 to purchase two used buses and then to replace an engine of one of our buses.
Alright, Ms. Ashton.
Yes, sir.
Go back here to your second slide.
Sure.
Two purchases of buses. Have you purchased, and see, I think you said the two buses that you wanted to purchase were not available? Or were they available?
Was that the one that, that $26,000? Donnie, on the head, Donald Brown can speak further to that.
We talked, I talked to this gentleman, this company, Sunny Merriman, sells used buses. They're the only outfit that we deal with, other than out of the state that sells used buses. And in July, he gave us a quote of, of $26,000 per bus. And I think that's when the superintendent's coming before you all and requested that. Well, when it was approved, go ahead, I called the gentleman, he said, Don, I couldn't hold those buses. He said, but I got a little bit better deal. He said, I got another wave of buses, and he said, I can sell them to you now for $20,000 apiece. So that reduced it by $6,000 per bus, $1,000 overall. So we've got, I'd say, two used buses. I just got off the phone with the man today. He said, we hope it happens this coming Tuesday. To give you an update on the engine that we're trying to request, this bus didn't make it into school. And we just, we had a little bit, we were just doing the math, thinking that maybe we had, possibly still had enough money to add two, to get this bus engine back in this bus and get this bus on the road. That would put us in, in, in pretty good shape. I've lost another engine in another bus since. We've talked about the, excuse me, yes, the engine in, in the bus. So now I'm still down another bus. I've got, I have no spares now. So if something goes down now, we'll be down a bus and then we'll just have to, those kids will have to stay at school. And then the first bus that's done will have to come, I mean, that's just how it would go with being that bus. You know, I've, I've been here since 2022, and I think you gentlemen know that, you know, we've got an old fleet. We've got old fleet buses. And, you know, this, this, this will get us, you know, I'm not worried until we have to be worried. Ronnie and myself, Ronnie Hale, the other mechanic that works alongside me here, we keep these buses on, on, on the go. And it's hard to do sometimes for us driving. But, you know, right now, if we can make this happen, the other bus, the other engine, just keep our fingers crossed. I can replace that eventually. The bus is still in good shape where we can repower it and still get more life out of it. I believe it had 150, 150,000 miles on it. The one involved that, that we just lost, the engine. And I have another bus in the fleet that, you know, my fingers crossed, you know, the engine is, 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 is legged injuries, but we're trying to keep, keep it together. You know, are the buses not safe? No, they're safe. They're just, when you crack down, they're, you know, they're, they're idle, you know, until you get around them. So I'm not trying to present you with one safe buses. I'm just saying that it's, it's a chore to keep this fleet running, and this would certainly be a big, at this time.
Alright, so the $52,000 that you were given, you have purchased two buses with that?
Yes, sir.
So you got $12,000 left over. Alright, okay. I just, just wanted to make sure that's what you had done. Alright, gentlemen, if you have any more questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Is that $52,000 part of the original amount requested, the $200,000?
Yes, that was the original, but the actual...
That includes the $52,000 that we granted last month, is that right?
That is the $52,000. There weren't two used buses purchased because those two buses they were looking at were bought by the time that it was approved. So what we're looking at, the actual purchase is the $20,000 per bus, so about $40,000 for that. Yes, for clarity, yes.
That's what we say. I mean, he, he's in the business to move.
It allowed us to save a little bit of money to put towards the engine, and we'll just have to add the $1,900 from the transportation line for that difference.
Where else have you priced your engines?
We priced them at Kingmore, which is a bus. I priced them at Rush, which was built on the International. I've had some dealings with them. I really don't, I priced it because I didn't get it. But I went, I sent one bus to them one time. I went to pick it up a few times, and I took that. So I wasn't really impressed with that. I only send buses away when Ronnie and I are capable enough to, to handle them. This engine replacement, you know, we're not on the job with five hours together every day. And, and, you know, you can make mistakes. Plus warranty and stuff like that, you want to, you want to leave it to a shot. But XL is a supplier of parts for, for parts. And he was telling me that they work on buses. I said, well, I, you know, I'll give them a shot. I mean, they're first-class as far as the parts and all, so I figured I'd give them a shot now. I'm going to see how this works out. You know, Kingmore, I, that's, that's the, the vendor when we've had buses, the international buses go down. We use Kingmore. When the Thomas buses go down, we use Sunny Merriman. But anyhow, I've had some, I've seen two engine jobs from them, and they weren't very, I was not impressed at all. I wound up working on the engines months after we got them back in. So I, I'm kind of eyeing them. in. So I'm kind of eyeing it, and I've been, I've been looking to see if I can find somebody that might could meet the needs. And they certainly gave us a better price than the rest of them.
I'm still a little bit unclear on the $200,000. Original amount requested, when was that requested?
Are you talking about the $52,000? Oh, are we talking about the $200,000?
The $200,000, yeah.
That was before me. I want to say 2023, when they purchased the bus for $125. I believe the original amount that was, I guess, earmarked for the transportation during that 2023, time span was 200, and 125,000 of it was spent.
But I guess my basis of my question is, I don't see where the $52,000 that we granted you last month is in this ledger.
So that is because, so I'm going by, and if I'm wrong, or if somebody sees something that, I don't. So originally, we requested $52,000 for the two used buses. But again, the two used buses that were at $26,000 were a no-go after they were approved. So now we're asking for two used buses at $20,000 a piece. So we're no longer requesting just the 52. We're requesting the remaining balance, that's for that earmarked transportation funds of $74,731. We're requesting that full balance for two used buses and an engine. I hope that made sense.
It does make sense, but I-
So the 52 is a no-go, because now, because with the $52,000, you wouldn't have had enough money to try to get the engine, so we're just looking at-
Right, but I don't see where it's in your balance anywhere. Maybe I'm missing something. Am I?
Mr. Williams, I think what the original ask last month in September was for the $52,000, which the board granted, approved, did the supplemental appropriation, the transfer and the supplemental appropriation. Since that time, I think they've only, of that $52,000, $40,000 of that was used. So technically, the $34,731 is remaining, but any appropriation that the board would consider tonight would be $22,000, $22,731 for the remaining monies that the county had originally set aside.
Gotcha.
Because the $12,000 has already been moved.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
Got it.
It's okay.
So where's the remaining balance? Where's it be? Where's it at? Is it in the general fund?
So that's set aside in the CIP general fund. Yes, sir. It's earmarked for the school, for the buses.
I understand it, but, and this is nothing against the schools. This is something where we're going to have to make some changes on. Every time that we look at the CIP, and it's in the general fund, and we take it to the CIP, it's lowering the general fund. Am I right?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So if we're going to do a CIP, those funds, to me, in my mind, to make it work out right, that money needs to be set aside somewhere else, other than the general fund. Because the general fund is very low.
Well, the, we are starting to get funds back in now, this time of year, for the tax monies. But we are in the process of engaging, as you all know, with that important to try and build that back up. Yes, sir.
That's just my thought process. I know they need buses. But we can't keep saying we're not going to spend money into the general fund when we're actually spending money into the general fund. No matter if it's earmarked for CIP or not. I can understand the money going in and money coming back in in a couple months. This money's going to be, it's gone.
Doesn't this money actually increase their total budget?
No, this is actually what we've been doing in the supplemental appropriation that the board, or the transfer with the supplemental appropriation. We left it under the capital projects on the county budget.
Yeah, but it's going into repairs of an existing bus. It's in the maintenance end. And I'm just trying to get it straight here. That's all, I just want it better clarified.
Depends on how you all wish to transfer and where you all do the supplemental appropriation. For the two buses that we did last month, we left those in the county budget, under capital projects.
That's already been approved.
That's already been approved.
That was $52,000. And those buses weren't available. So I think you said you purchased two $20,000 buses.
That, that worked to the advantage.
All right, so that's, that was good. You saved $12,000. I'm tickled to death.
Yeah. Now, if we can, if, you know, we're requesting, I know that all that money was directed to buying the new buses. And we only got one out of the deal. And I don't know how y'all feel about that, you know, but I mean, right now, instead of asking for a new bus, I'd just like to get, you know, just the repower points that I have. And if they're, it's more than general maintenance with the age of the fleet. So I can't really say, you know, it takes X amount of dollars to maintain a bus realistically. But in the first, well, I think we had 2020 buses, 2022 buses, and I could say, oh, yeah, it costs X amount of dollars to prevent maintenance on these buses and keep them up. But with other things, I mean, I've got, I've got a bus in Ashland now that it's, the exhaust system's wrong, and everybody, I'm sure, most of y'all understand, emissions and all that, that's what you're doing with these buses. But, you know, I got to keep fixing them. I have no choice. Certainly, I would like to have the buses, but I understand, they're expensive, and, you know, hopefully, we can work in the future to change them. But right now, I think we're just in a current, current situation now that can go south, even further south. And I'm not saying, even if we do this, that it's not going to. I mean, we don't want to make that picture. I'm just saying that this will help. This will be some of the pain.
This will correct the problem at the time. All right, your quote that you want to go with on the engine is, how much?
It's about thirty, a little over $36,000. It's exactly $36,635.
All right, and you're going to apply your $12,000 to that?
Yes.
Plus some, right?
Plus some, plus $1,900 out of the transportation line.
And you're asking for how much money?
So you already have approved 52.
It looks like it puts you $1,904 in the red, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, no, that's coming from my transportation budget. So it's going to be 74, 731 is our main balance from the original. We already approved 52,000, so the difference from that, plus the 19, take the 1904, that's going to come from my transportation budget.
So I think the ask from the county would be the 22,731.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, that's what I was wondering. It'd be $22,000 instead of $34,000.
And I apologize, this is, I'm trying to read from this.
$22,731, yeah. $22,731.
And that would be the county's portion.
Mm-hmm.
Out of the CIP.
That's a big difference in $34,000. That's what I was, I was looking at, at $34,000.
What I, what I, I see what she did. What she did is that she totally did not, what she did, the $52,000 was not placed back in there from what you had already approved. So she started from the very beginning, from the $200,000, took the 2023, she started from scratch, versus there was already $52,000 that you all had already approved. It's like we were asking for that $52,000 plus the difference again, but you had already approved it. So that's the confusion from the chart. I apologize.
All right, so it's $22,731 is what you're asking to put that bus engine in it, which funds you shot, let's put it that way.
Right.
All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? So you're not going to, are you going to use your 19, the 1904 then?
Yes, for my transportation line. We'll need that to cover the remaining balance for the, for that engine, yes.
All right, so you're going to need less than 22,731. Is that correct, Buck?
I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to-
You take the 1904 from the 22,731, that's less than, isn't that the way it's supposed to be done?
So the 1904 will be coming from the school division.
From the school, from us.
All right, but that would come out, they wouldn't be asking for 22,731 if they got to 1904. Is that correct? Or am I just wrong on that?
The $22,000 is the remaining balance of the $74,000, after spending the $52,000 on the buses.
Right. We need the full 22,731.
And to make up for the rest of what they need to make the two bus purchases and put the engine in, is $1,900 and some dollars, and that's coming into transportation.
Yes, yes, sir.
So instead of asking the board for the additional $1,900, they found that within the transportation.
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm looking at, it's 36,635 is what's needed for a bus engine. 12 from that's going to give us 22,731. All right, you got the 1904 there. That's on, if you take that away, it's even less money. Or you leave that 1904 in the bus account for other things to be done. Am I right or wrong?
That's the way I see it also.
Yeah. That's, that's the way I see it.
So they had subtracted the 1904 out of the 22,000.
So you take 19, 1904 from that, gives us what? I can't see it.
Donna, real quick, when you buy that new engine, do you get a core price back on the old engine?
They have given us $7,600 change for it.
Have you, have you put that in there?
Sorry. That's the 36, that 36-
Includes that?
Yes, that's the final price after they-
After the core, okay.
Add $7,600 to that, and I think it was like $43 and change, but if you deduct the core from it.
Okay.
It comes with the 36.
Thank you. Okay.
I saw one of your quotes where they were only giving you, what, $33, $3400 for core. And when I saw this one, it's $7,694. A lot of difference there.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I didn't question that, because that was one of the people that I used before that I would have asked you.
Oh, I wouldn't question who wins more money. All right, so I guess, I guess I'm looking at, if you take your 22,731, and you deduct that, that 1904 from it, you get, you get 2721, I mean, 727.
Is that right, Mr. Tadlow?
Is that right, Jim?
No.
Or am I just, I thought it ain't wrong?
Because what, what they are looking at is, you've got the $34,731 up on the screen. Everything on the right side up to, up to the balance, exclude the balance right now. So after they purchased the buses, it was $34,731 remaining. So $40,000 was already taken out, but the board had previously approved $52,000. So with the, with the school division purchasing the $40,000, they have the $34,731 remaining. But the board has already appropriated the $12,000 additional monies above the $40,000. So the, if you look at what the county has remaining in the, the CIP funds, the transfer would be 22,731. So the total engine cost is the $36,635. So the, the total engine amount is more than what is remaining in the CIP fund. Appropriated, not appropriated. So what's left is the 1904, which is what the school division is talking about using funds out of their current budget to offset.
All right.
Last time I've been in a meeting and had this much discussion, it's been putting a white stripe on a red fire truck.
All right. Any other questions from the board? If not, what's the board's place?
They've got to have school buses. They got to get these kids up and down the highway. It's bad enough that they don't even have a spare.
Right.
I don't think you have any choice. Those who, those who criticize us and say, "Well, you keep spending money on the schools." Well, in some cases, you have to keep spending money.
You making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, go ahead.
Include your amount in your motion.
That is for, is the amount correct? 2273?
22,731. And that would include the transfer funds from the county's capital improvement fund of the school, school bus CIP funds, and appropriation to that same line item, the 9103-7027.
All right. You second, Mr. Brown?
I'm second.
All right, any other discussion? On to it.
And that's all of that CIP funds for buses.
That's correct.
Another one breaks down, another engine goes, it's just going to set more.
Going to have to get a better boxer rubber bands.
That's what we're at, I'll head before we come to it. We're just, we're going to have to wait until next year.
Yeah.
Well, we've still got to find a way to get those kids to school. Yeah, we got to do that.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against? All right. There you go.
Thank you so much. I have our administrator of operations and maintenance to give an update on the well project.
All right. How you do, sir?
Good evening, Kellen Hardcastle. So, uh-
That, if you, right on the end, right there.
What's her name again?
Kellen Hardcastle.
Mr. Hardcastle, all right.
All righty, so I don't have a PowerPoint for you guys. I wish I did. One didn't get sent over in time, so I'm just kind of, going to lay everything out for you guys. I'll do it as quickly as I can. I'm sure all of you already know the, the well permit that we have at the elementary school and for the high school as well. It's all built into one permit. It's set to expire March 31 of 2026, excuse me, March 1 of 2026. There is a statement in the contract that says that we can apply for a minor modification, which allows for an extension of 120 days on the abandonment of one of the wells. I've already applied for that extension, so we are going to be receiving that extra 120 days. That's going to push that abandonment date out to June 29 of 2026. That being said, I still want to begin the project as soon as possible, so I'm coming today and I'm requesting funds for the amount of $22,632. This amount is coming from a quote that I received from a engineering consulting firm by the name of Stan Tech. It's actually not the first firm that I reached out to. I reached out to two before that, Waterwell Solutions and Power and Flow. Waterwell Solutions, what they told me was, "I think Stan Tech is going to be your guy." I tried to go to Power and Flow next, because they were also recommended to me by somebody that I work with in the department. I received a quote from them. That amount was for $8,000. However, it is significantly reduced in what they would be doing in the assessment of this well, as opposed to Stan Tech. So for Power and Flow, there would not be an engineer working on this project. They would not be able to monitor any of the data that we're going to need to be monitored. They would also not be able to provide an assessment at the end of this monitoring process. Stan Tech, for the $22,632, they're going to install a transducer for us. They're going to monitor the water- They're gonna monitor the water flow data, and they're gonna monitor the drawback as well for up to six weeks. What this is gonna do is kind of give them a little bit of, uh, a little bit of ability to kind of make an assessment on how the, how efficiently the well will be able to work if we were to tie all three schools together to one well, the one that is now currently, um, providing water to the middle school and the high school. After they make that, excuse me, after they install the transducer, after they wait that four to six weeks and they gather that data, then they would make an assessment. After that assessment, they're gonna send an engineer to the site. When they send an engineer to the site, this is gonna be the part of the process that allows them to determine how exactly we're gonna tie the three schools together. After this is done, they're gonna provide all that information back to us, and then we can actually move forward with the next part of the process, which is actually tying the three schools together. For us to do that, we need to get this assessment done first, and that's why I'm here, uh, requesting these funds. And if you guys have any questions, I would love to answer them.
What's that request amount again?
It's twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And how many bids did you get?
I got one quote, one I reached out to first, and then I actually have another quote, so two total quotes.
Alright, but you didn't, you didn't give us any paperwork on this. We have nothing on this.
I can, uh, have this information sent to you guys.
I would suggest that would be the best thing to do. Send us some help.
Okay.
I don't know if it was given to you or not, but there was some information flowing around in regards of grant from DEQ to help with this well. Have you seen that?
Yes, the Financial Construction and Assistance Program.
Yes, have you, uh, started to apply, or have you?
We have started working together, an application that we're gonna put in. The application window closed back in either May or August, but however, sometimes they get funds that they receive back that can be reallocated, so we're gonna send an application this year over anyway. With the extension of this, uh, project for that extra hundred and twenty days, we would be within the application window to possibly receive funding next year for this project as well.
Okay.
So the plan is to close, uh, the elementary school well and have the middle, high school well supply water to the entire school system, is that right?
Yes, abandon the elementary school well, tie the, tie the elementary school storage tank to the high school well, and the high school well will be pumping water to all three schools, yes.
And I made a note the other night that you guys did have a hundred and ten thousand dollars set aside in the school CIP for this project, is that right?
Yes, that was earmarked. And I'm actually requesting the twenty-two, six, thirty-two to come from those earmarked funds.
Mr. Toddlock, couldn't the, uh, the hundred and ten thousand part of that be used for this instead of requesting additional funding?
Yes, sir, I, I think that, um, might be what the request is of the use of the portion of that a hundred and ten thousand dollars that has already been set aside.
Yes, I, maybe I wasn't, um, but yes, the, the funds that were earmarked, I'm requesting twenty-two, six, thirty-two from those funds specifically, not from anywhere else.
More money?
Yeah, still need, we need to see the quotes.
What'd you say, Mr. Brown?
We need to see the quotes.
Yeah, you need to get us the quotes and the information you have on it before we can make a decision.
Okay, I'll have that sent to Mr. Toddlock here, and, um, I'll, I can get that done within the next couple of days, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hardcastle. Ms. Ashton, you have anything else, ma'am?
Yes, um, our finance facilitator, Dr. Karen Pika, with a finance update.
I'm not here to ask for money.
That's good, that's very good.
Talk slow. Oh, gosh, you're killing me. So, good evening, I have completed day twelve in my, um, new volunteer capacity, and, you know, someone suggested maybe I'll just start digging a well and drive my kids to school. I have a little spare time on my hands, so I can solve that too. So the good news, I had given y'all a whole bunch of information. I've got two different reports I wanna share tonight. One is specific to the schools, and the other is some recommendations for the county. So what you'll find is an executive summary that identifies what I'm doing, is comparisons year over year. So you'll see revenue and expenses, where we were in FY twenty-five at this point, and where we, um, are in FY twenty-six at this point. And what I would like to do is share an update, that where I have the payment backlog exceeds five hundred thousand, I would like to let you know that as of this week, we have pushed out a hundred and one thousand dollars in payments. So we were able to get, thanks to Mary, thanks to Gail, thanks to Pam. I have tracked quite a few steps walking between the offices, but we are, and UHY teams were very helpful, so we have reduced our vendor backlog by a hundred and one thousand. The priorities that we're setting for those payments, that I've set for those payments, anything that's at risk of being shut off, there were a couple systems, there's still one that's being at risk of being shut off. We've also prioritized local vendors and small businesses because of any cash flow issues, and then we've got some other priorities that we've set. So the goal is to get all the backlog depleted by November first. I know we have the new, um, team, we've got Dr. Anna Hearn starts on Monday as the professional, um, county finance coordinator. I will stick around as the volunteer facilitator. We also have, thank you, we've got a payroll person that is coming back part-time, so we will not have any disruption in payroll benefits. We have, uh, accounts payable coming on board, I think the twenty-seventh of October, no, twenty-fourth of October. Anyway, there's some, some folks coming on board, so by November, my objective is to make sure, am I talking too fast? My objective is to make sure that when the new team comes on board, they're dealing with keeping things current rather than backlog. So I shared with the school board on Monday that I gathered up all the invoices that have been floating around in the different offices, and I have over eight inches of invoices on my desk that date back as far as July, and I have to look at each one of them to see, is it paid, is it entered, um, or is it just sitting there? We get calls from vendors every day, I get calls from vendors, I get calls from the different program managers, asking if we can push this one, push that one. There are a lot of purchase orders that still need to be approved. So the good news is we're making progress. There's still plenty of opportunity to excel. So we have brought down the payment backlog a little bit. I have eighty-nine thousand dollars in checks sitting on my desk that have not been deposited. Those checks have been around there since, some of them since early August. I cannot, if you're gonna ask me why this hasn't been done, I can't answer you. So I'm not the one that can answer that, but I am here to say is we're getting it fixed.
Can you say that the reason for the backlog was not related to money being available?
It's not money. Somebody wasn't doing their job. Period of the discussion. You can't have eight inches of invoices that haven't even been entered or cleared or paid and have paid staff. So that's it, as blunt as I can be. No, it's not a money issue. There is something I am gonna ask for with, in terms of appropriations. We do have another, there's an audit that came out for how we're doing with retirement system. They sampled seventeen records, two of them are wrong, so we're not making contributions to the retirement system without getting an handle on that. I don't know if the tax has been paid. There's nine hundred and forty-four thousand that is sitting in the, the county in coffers that is revenue that I have to look at to see how much of that should remain in the county as reimbursement versus how much should get pushed over to the school account, which is why you'll see a difference in the reports I sent. There's a difference in what the school system reflects as revenue, which is a negative eighty-nine thousand, what the county system reflects as revenue, because we have to go through each of those line items and say how much of this needs to be, to remain at the county for reimbursement, and how much gets moved, and we just haven't had time to do that yet. I'm in the process, part of my process with the purchase orders. Every time there's a request for a purchase order, I actually look at the item. Today, there was a seventy-four dollar purchase order that I rejected because it didn't have any supporting documentation. So we're taking a very hard look with the support of the leadership. I don't care if it's ten cents, I don't care if it's twenty cents, I don't care if it's a hundred dollars. It is getting looked at. We're looking at what the current status of that line item is in the budget, and I've been able to, um, look at each line item in the budget, and I can go back and see how much was spent last year, how much was spent the year before, and how much is remaining this year. So, yeah, the system is clunky and it's old, but guess what? I've learned how to ride that horse. So we don't have to buy the Cadillac just yet, but we still have to get something else, 'cause I could, you know, we should be riding the horse in the year twenty-thirty. So we're able to get those things pushed out. We have, again, trying to focus on some of the local vendors. We are going to be looking at, there's risks, so I gave you some risks of payments, audit results. So I do have to say, at this point, I'm not working at all on the county audit. So there is work that the school needs to do, and I have received some information from the Cox Farmer Team, Taylor, Mr. Taylor, what's his name?
Stover.
And it's not gonna happen until we get all these payments made and some other things taken care of. But we do have more staff coming in, so that might be something they can work on. The also, we're also late on the required state report. There's a big state report that's due about finances. We were, we got an extension through October sixth. We're gonna have to get another extension. We're not the only school in the state that's late, but that is something that, my understanding, I've talked to a couple people and done this report. You have to dedicate at least two weeks full-time just to that report in order to get it done. And that can't happen while we're doing all these other things. So, um, key observations I put in there that, um, technology, there's some processes. We have, again, even just in a few days, we've been there, I've been there, um, there have been some, um, discipline's not the right word. There's been some consistency required in the application of processes. So the forensic audit was very clear about some things that weren't being done. They're now being done. You're not getting anywhere unless you've got receipts, unless you've got purchase orders, unless you've got verification. It, it takes time. It doesn't matter. It has to be done. So we're doing that, we've, we've, I found out too, that part of the, part of the issue with some of the processes is there was central office staff, I call it central office, what's it called? Okay, I call this central office staff that is actually doing the jobs of some of the directors. So you have some of the directors that are doing a great job managing everything, putting the paperwork in. Some of them were waiting for the director of finance or other people at central office to do it. You can't run normalization like that, because then you've got different people with their fingers in it. There's still too much manual stuff going on with, you know, to, to make some corrections, um, in the system. So all that is happening, uh, I went to the school board this week, and they had a policy that they enacted in June of twenty-twenty-four that had been a little neglected. Basically, the school board said any, any payment over twenty-five hundred had to go to the board. It was in reaction to the forensic audit. The forensic audit recommended any purchase, like a contract or a purchase order that's over twenty-five hundred go to the board, but the way it got enacted was any payment. So I let the board, the school board know that I'm not following that, because otherwise, all of this other couple hundred thousand dollars in backlog I have would have to wait until next month for it to push out. So what I did do was provide the school board, you all have the same list, it's a list of all the payments that are over twenty-five hundred, or if they would be taken together, they might get to be over twenty-five hundred through the course of the year. So the, the reports that you have are county reports, treasury reports, and school reports. It's a lot of detail, I realize that. I think it's important to have that level of transparency, so you can ask the questions if you need to. And for the revenue, it's gonna be something that I have to kind of get a handle on to work in. So there is one, I'm asking for, this isn't, I don't know how to call this, 'cause it's not a supplemental. So I did put in, um, a request for an advanced appropriation. We're gonna need money from the third quarter moved into the second quarter. So licenses and software are an annual expense. We also have the governor's schools an annual expense. We haven't paid that bill yet, because you take the, if you take the amount that a school's supposed to get and divide it by four, you come up with a deposit for each quarter that doesn't meet your needs, because some of these expenses are front-loaded. So what you have in front of you tonight is a request to take money that would be in the third quarter appropriation to the tune of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, move it into the second quarter appropriation, so that we can pay three different technology bills by November first, so we don't accrue late fees or risk any shut-off of the systems. So I'm not asking for more money. I'm asking to move money that is in the checkbook for third quarter into second quarter. This will not be the only time you hear me do this. In November, I'm gonna come back with a list. So what we've done with the help of UHY is generate a list of all the contracts and expenses that are annual that exceed what is in the line item. So just so you know, the way that I'm working it is, every single line item has to have enough money in that appropriation to be able to approve a purchase order or an invoice. Sometimes I'll approve it if it won't affect the category, and we'll move money based on the MOU that's in place and the statutory authority for the school board. You can move money within a category, but not across. So there have been some instances where I've had to move money from one line item to another, and the reason is, there are at least three contracts, of which I am aware, that were never included in the budget estimates. If you go through the budget, you won't find them. They don't show up in the expenses. They're kind of hidden. So what I'm starting to do also is delineate and really look at the chart of accounts that the state uses, so that we're capturing appropriately in the category it's supposed to be. I caught another one today. It was, it was only four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, but it shouldn't be in this category. It should be in another one. And so we're starting to do that, because again, when you report this to the state, it looks like we might be spending more money in one area than we are, which gives us a little bit different perspective. So the ask for tonight is to approve eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents that is in the third quarter budget, to move that into the second quarter allotment, so we can pay these bills.
Eighteen thousand, what now?
Eighteen, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. This is not additional money for the school budget. I wanna make that clear for everyone in the audience, everyone who's listening. We're not asking for more money. We're asking for it in a different quarter. And I have given, I think, let's see, I have a mistake in, um, the form I gave you. I think I'm missing a couple zeros in one of the account lines. Sorry.
Are, are these funds being requested for the technology line item under the county side?
No, this is the school. I'm sorry. This is for, these two line codes are school accounts.
You ask them category?
Right.
No, it's the technology category.
Right, so it, on the, the county side, what you're asking for, the, the county is for that amount, the?
Sixty-eight, two hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred. Those two account lines?
The sixty, sixty-eight hundred for the technology on the county side.
Right, sixty-eight, sixty-eight, two hundred, okay, so it's the sixty-eight hundred, it's the same account line for us. Right, isn't it? Sixty, yeah, it's this.
Oh, I can't read that, so I'm.
Okay, so on the county, one thirty, sixty-eight hundred. So it's, thank you. It's twenty-one hundred out of three thousand on our side and sixteen, seven, seventy-eight, fifty-two out of the sixty-fourty. So it's just an advanced appropriation. There will still be money remaining in those accounts. Right now, I'm talking to the program manager, because there's a lot of difference of what, what we both think there are, but I'm asking for, and I'm gonna come back in November and do the same thing, because we've got a couple other bills that are a lot larger than this, that we haven't paid, and, um, they need to be paid. But that, that means you'll decrement the following two quarters.
So we're doing this, also, it's, this is the first year the school system's been quarterly funded. So it will help prepare the budget, because you're actually starting to see things when they need to be paid for next year's budget.
Yes, and we're not the only school district that does quarterly. I, I found there's other school districts that do monthly.
Right, and I'm, what I'm trying to do is just get it out there that, that this is the first year that we've done quarterly funding for the schools. And when you put the budget together, I'll remember some conversations, uh, in regards to contracts and different things, when they come to, in the amounts. So this is more or less getting them aligned in which quarter they need to be paid. Even though it may be in the third quarter, it's due, but you need the money now to pay it.
Right, so next year what will happen is, when you do the quarterly apportionment appropriations, they won't be entire amount divided by four.
Right.
It will be, we want this much, right, in this quarter, in this category, this much in this one, because you have to pay the contracts that way. And so this is one of the things we're gonna do. We're already actually starting to look at the budget. I know y'all haven't, we haven't issued guidance from county yet, but we, but we're already looking at what's gonna happen, and that's gonna, every single line item is gonna get its own review. To find out, I, I'm finding out there's some line items that had money in that never had money spent out of that line item. I don't know where they went. I suspect there were other line items in the category that were overspent, but you kept putting it in this one line item, because that's the way it's always been done. So I'm gonna get as close as I can to zero basing, 'cause Mr. Williams, I have been asking for that forever, and you've been chuckling at me. I'm gonna get as close as I can to zero basing by looking at what is actually required. For example, we're having a discussion right now, there's something that was bought during COVID era funding, because it was helpful. And the question right now is, is it duplicate spending to something else we already have? So I have a, a request from someone that says, hey, can you look at this and find out, you know, if we can pay this? I'm like, why? Why do we need it? So both Dr. Leslie and Ms. Ashton, they said, look, we've got objectives. What we're gonna be doing with the budget is looking at, how does each spend? What we're going to be doing with the budget is looking at how does each spend, every single item, how does that support student outcomes? If it doesn't, it gets put in a separate bucket. So, we're starting that process already. So, I'm going to stop there for a second because I do have a little bit more that I want to share. Can I, Luttrell, do we have what we need to do the motion to move this or is there something else I need to do?
No. It would just be like we did last month, an appropriation from the third quarter. And I can get you to put the 6,000-6800 on the sheet later on.
Okay, so both of these, okay. I can read the paperwork. No problem. And we also instituted a new process on the school side where if something like this needs to happen or if somebody wants to, has an expenditure that might go over line, I've created a form. They then have to sign and submit that with some justification and documentation so we can start having a paper trail. And I'm going to get out of the business of paper because there's nothing, there's no space over there. We're going to have to start looking at making sure we can document when the auditors come. But also, you know, if that could get somebody hit by a bus, it still can keep moving. So, we're starting to start some new processes.
As long as they don't blow the bus up.
Oh, gosh. All right. So, can I have this money or y'all need to...
Why don't you just get to the point?
Hi, how are you, Mr. Fisher?
Give me a good thing.
She's been beating around the bush all night.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the transfer for advanced appropriation that's so-called.
I second it.
Amount? All right. Got a motion and a second. Any have discussion?
And that is going to the 30-6,000-6800 for the technology.
Correct.
Yeah.
And should we look at change in this form so it doesn't read supplemental? Because supplemental means in addition to me. I know I want to have a whole hundred bazillion forms, Luttrell, but I'm a little uncomfortable. This isn't an ask for money.
No. This is monies that have been budgeted but just not appropriated.
Right. It's an advance appropriation. So, I will work that out.
We put another checkbox in there.
And that can be changed.
Just from the public perspective, it's better. So, I will pause for a second to see on this portion of my county...
I got a motion on the floor. We haven't voted yet. All right. No other discussion? All y'all, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? All right.
I think so.
You said you have three contracts that were not in the budget. But are they and how much?
What I'll say is that they are contracts that are required to keep the finances working, the payroll working, employee leave working, et cetera. One of them is $38,000 and another one's $15,654. And the third one, I can't remember.
All right. Okay. All right. We'll dig into that a little bit deeper later.
Oh, no, no. They'll be in next year's budget.
Yeah.
But we found the money to fund them, which, again, that to me is also problematic that we had money that could fund this without having to be budgeted. But, I mean, Dr. Leslie did what she could with the information that she had. This is not, I got to tell you, this is not something she could have seen.
All right. Now, I'll let you go on.
So, I'll pause for questions. If there's anything that you saw in the reports or any other questions that you have of me...
You said most of the invoices got taken care of?
No. No, I only took care of 101,000.
How about the electric?
Nope. Still haven't touched the electric bill, haven't touched the breeze line, haven't touched gas, haven't touched... There's a lot that hasn't been touched yet. And I can't explain why we haven't paid a darn electric bill since July 1st. So, Mr. Harkes did do some work in trying to reach out to Dominion to see if we could get on a corporate account. They have this like 15 account limit, so it may be something we want to combine with the county. If not, there's going to be a way that they get their check and they're going to have to accept it. So, there's no way I'm cutting 30 separate checks.
That's how many meters they've got?
No, that's how many invoices I have on the desk.
Okay. Okay.
Just for Dominion, just to be clear. Any other questions? So, for everyone here, everyone, payroll not, the county provided support to get payroll paid benefits. I'm able to do a lot of things in the system if people, you know, minor things that people need changed. So, if there's any concern that I had not worked with this system before, please come to my office and you can ask me any question and I'll be able to find it. It's a clunky system, but you got to play the card you're dealt and I'm using it. Okay, next. And then I'll be out of here. So, the next thing that I have, I'm switching over to the county side of the house because as the county finance facilitator, I recognize I'm doing that. I know that the main focus is on the school. One of the things I would like to recommend, I know that you all have been talking about strategic plans. We've been having a lot of conversation around reserves, a lot of conversation around finances. And I think we really need to get the county budget guidance out for 2027. And last year, I think it came out the third week in October. I would urge you to get it out before November 1st. There's a couple of things that I'm recommending, why I'm recommending that because I think some people may just have gotten their tax bills. And so, that bill is based on the .74 that is for this year, not based on reassessed value. I think that it would behoove the county to get ahead of any requests around compensation. I would recommend that the county issue budget guidance that includes an option. Every division in the county works on a budget that is either a 0% compensation increase, a .25, or a .5. And when I say compensation increase, I mean, A, salary increase, B, cover insurance increases, or C, do both. So, it doesn't mean that you have to adopt it. Otherwise, what you're going to have is one division might put in for a 5 cent increase, you know, 5% increase in salaries and insurance. Another division might put in for a 3%. You guys need, and my recommendation is get ahead of that now so that you're including that in your guidance. I would also highly recommend that when you ask for the budget this year, you do not ask for last year's budgeted amount. You ask for the 24 and 25 actual expenditures. Because what's happening, and this is part of why I'm so hard over on the zero-based budgeting, what's happening is your people are just taking, it's not just the school. This is natural in budgeting. You take whatever you got last year and you just plus it up by 3, 4, or 5%. That never gets you what the actual expenditures were. Every time there's been a budget presented in this county, it has been last year's budget was this, this year's budget is this. So, what you really need is what actually is the expenses from last year? And again, since I'm the volunteer facilitator, I'm happy to look at those data when they come in. And then, I would also recommend that you set your schedule for your hearings so that you have, you're able to vote on the new tax rates by May of next year. So, I think in the past, you've had to wait until the budget has come in. It's been late in June and then you have to hold your hearings for what the tax rate's going to be. And that's always kind of a crush. If you look at the minutes, you have five, six, seven, eight meetings in one month. You can get ahead of that, right, with what we're going to be doing. I know the school has been late in the budget in the past. Won't happen this year. You're going to have the guidance that goes out now. People will have until, what, January 10th to submit the budget, whatever that date is. And then you'll be able to work on that. And I would also recommend that the county look at finances in two different ways. So, I have done some very, very preliminary analysis based on what the increase in assessments is going to be. So, the assessed increase is anywhere from, what, 50 to 70%? That's not what I used. I looked at what the county revenue is strictly from property taxes. And I adjusted that by 20 to 40%, low end to high end because you will see an increase in that revenue line by a certain amount. If you look, if you do that analysis and you look at those figures, the Board of Supervisors will be able to lower the tax rate from the .74 downward. You, what you want, you'll be able to actually lower it. I've done some calculations on a range. You could lower the tax rate, provide funding for replenishing the reserves, start a technology fund so that you can front-load and start looking at what those transitions are costing to be, provide some economic development, and still provide for increasing employee compensation while reducing taxes. You just have to get ahead of it. You have to start looking at those analyses and those data, and I'm happy to do it. It is, you don't have to wait until everyone does their adjustment, their reassessment, to find out what your range is going to be for the increases. Because county tax rate is set at 1, but this is, again, just for the personal property. You will then also have to make sure that everyone is managing their expenses judiciously because otherwise, you're going to keep going into the reserves. So, I, again, done the calculations. You will be able to lower the tax rate, still collect more revenue without burdening everyone in the county. That's it.
Gentlemen, you have any questions?
No. Thank you. You got help on the way.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ashton, you have anything else?
No, sir. I'm just going to thank you.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yes.
What is, what policy do you guys have for when you post your meetings on YouTube? I've had so many people call and say, hey, I wanted to watch the school board meeting for Monday night. When will it be posted? I don't know what to tell them.
It should usually, it should be posted the next morning.
I don't think it was.
I don't think it's there.
Okay, I'm on that. I'm on it. It should be posted the very next morning.
Will you check to make sure that's done on a regular basis?
Yes, sir. I certainly can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, the presentations we have, and next is the county administrator's report. Ms. Padlock?
Yes, sir. For the month of September, we had seven new structures. Total construction cost for the month is about $5 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is about $48.2 million, which is approximately $3.2 million below this time last year. Have several appropriations. First one is a reimbursement on the phones for the sheriff's office, 3102-5203, in the amount of $1,770.
Say it's a reimbursement for the phones?
Yes, sir.
$1,770. How much was it?
$1,770.
All right. What's your pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a second reimbursement for the phones for the sheriff's office, 3102-5203, for $50.
What's your pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a transfer of funds in supplemental appropriation from the sheriff's donation account and the prior year sheriff's donation account to 3102-5977 in the amount of $2,977.51.
All right. What's your pleasure, the board? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have the transfer of, from the water public access revenue fund to 8105-9,000 in the amount of $7,847.17.
Move to approve. All right. Got a, got a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? What was this money going to be used for?
That was for the funds on the picnic tables and the Hampton Hall entrance.
All right. Okay. All right. What's your pleasure, the board? I mean, I'm sorry. All of us in favor, say aye.
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 Next, we have the August interest for the opioid abatement fund, 5102-3200, in the amount of $55.25.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have supplemental appropriation for the UHY invoice September services to 1101-3,002, in the amount of $31,978.75.
All right. What's your pleasure, the board?
Move to approve.
All right. Got a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item we have is the October '25 transfer from the revenue account to the expenditure account required by the auditors to 3506-5956 in the amount of $21,636.28.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any have discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Received an update from the planning commission that the comprehensive plan was reviewed and approved by them on July 17th, 2025. That document has been sent to the state for VDOT's review and DEQ's review for any necessary revisions. Once we receive that back, we'll provide that to the board and we'll have to have the public hearing with the Board of Supervisors. Reassessment update, we continue to work with Vision. The commission of revenue has followed up with Vision in putting data into our system. We are also backchecking some of the property values that have been noted. Upcoming items related to the reassessment. Once all information has been placed into the system, notices will be mailed out and we're anticipating that sometime this fall. The initial meetings with the assessor, which is Vision, will be held with those contesting their assessments. The county will need to determine a location for office space for the assessor, including the meeting room for the assessor. But we'll also need that same meeting room for the Board of Equalization, which we anticipate in the first part of the calendar year next year. Just to reiterate on the assessments, while the total assessment value for the county as a whole has increased, the tax rate will be evaluated into next, for the fiscal year '27 budget. So, therefore, when an assessment value increases, the tax rate is typically lowered and vice versa. If the assessment is decreased, the tax rate would increase in order to equalize that same revenue. Want to provide an update on the Little Wakanoko dredging project. The county participated in a conference call this past Tuesday with the Northern Eck Planning District Commission, also included the consultant that we have. VMS was on the call in Army Corps of Engineers. This was a pre-application meeting to determine specifics that would be required by the Army Corps of Engineers. The, one of the challenges that we have with the Little Wakanoko is that there are two Army Corps of Engineer districts involved. One is the Baltimore and one is the Norfolk District. We do have another meeting set up later this month with VMS to go back over some of the questions that were raised and answers that we received from that previous meeting. The plan is still to complete the joint permit application as soon as possible. Identify the final dredge material sites. The property owners would need to be notified and approval would need to be obtained from them. Also, the oyster ground holders within the dredge project would need to be notified and approval. So, we are continuing to work with everyone on that. And once we get the dredge school site locations confirmed, we'll start reaching out to property owners. We are continuing to proceed applying for the water access funding from the state in order to proceed forward with the actual dredging. And those applications are due in the spring of 2026. Next item I have is an update on the regional radio system. And I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Harding to provide that update.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So, I just wanted to give a quick update where we are with the regional radio system. We have seen to repair, install a point in the local county. We are completely with our infrastructure minus one microwave dish that should be installed sometime in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, we are waiting on our partners in Lancaster County. They've had some issues with that same microwave issue and power companies that are kind of holding us back. With that coming up, we could be looking at some additional funds that we're going to need to pay out in rent for tower space that will start in December of this year and go until we're ready to get the old equipment off of the towers. Myself and Mr. Dave... Myself and Mr. Basie have reached out to our ATC company and attempted to waive those fees and they've come back and they've completely declined us and all that. Since then, we've also spoken with somebody for a regional radio system, haven't heard anything back or any other actions we may be able, may be able to take to waive those fees or lessen those fees to the county. We've got the numbers of the contract here that the Pennsylene Green Lawrence County, I don't know if y'all are aware of that, but we're looking at roughly fifty-seven, fifty-eight tomorrow for the two tower sites, so we're not even going to be complete by December one of this year. Also with that, I believe we're going to wind up, if we're not completing the next couple of weeks for radio testing, for our service coverage testing, we're probably going to wind up in May of next year before we can complete that coverage test to have the ultimate testing window. So we're having the condition that we need, that we give us the worst possible scenario for radio system being able to travel back to the towers. So other than where we're at, if you all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them and best of times for you.
With the delay in the coverage testing for the radio system, that's also going to put a delay in the final acceptance.
That's correct.
Sign off. So with that being said, what is that doing for our warranty on our radio system and components?
My understanding from the conversations I have with our project manager is that the warranty on the equipment that we have already accepted and are using, such as the mobiles, the portable, that is going to be, from what we started using, and that warranty has already started, the equipment that is in the shelter sites and the dishes that we're not currently actively using is going to be extended. I will clarify all that information. I can get that back to you all.
Make sure you get that in writing?
Yes.
Because most definitely, for any equipment we're not using, we don't want the warranty to start until we start using.
So I will, I will reach out and find out that information and get that passed back from us as that line. We'll get to you all.
All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right. What's Todd? Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you for the work that you've been putting in on this. And if you don't mind, let's introduce that chief of emergency services.
Captain. Who's next on the list? Thank you.
Good seeing all of you all again. Christopher Bailey, the new chief of emergency services here in North Farnborough County. And it's my pleasure to be able to work with you all and serve these five sessions.
How's it going so far?
Fantastic. Fantastic. I got great help, great leadership, and the transition has moved very good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's good. Glad to have you on board, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank y'all. Thank you too, Egan. All right. Ms. Tadlock, you have anything else?
All right, I've got just a couple more items. Just want to touch on the budget process we have started, that have been working with Mr. Basie to get that kicked off. As we did last year, we sent out notices at the end of October. We are trying to meet that goal again this year. And we had our due date for all budget requests, I believe it was January third last year, so we're probably looking at the same timeframe for the upcoming budget cycle, so January fifth for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-seven budget. Want to let you know that we've been reviewing the vicious and dangerous dogs with the county attorney. I know he's been actively looking at that. There's some additional information that I believe we want to discuss in closed meeting with the, the board as well, but I don't, if you have anything for this portion of it, so.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, the, the state code has been updated significantly since you all adopted your vicious and dangerous dog ordinance back in two thousand and three originally and a little bit, two thousand and eight, I believe. But since then, the state code's been changed quite a bit regarding those issues, so I'm going to discuss this more with you in closed session, but going to recommend ultimately an amendment to your ordinance to give the county and the sheriff's office more tools in the toolbox to address those kinds of issues and more avenues to, to resolve those kinds of conflicts in the county. The leash law that you have that prevents or prohibits dogs running at large in certain subdivisions in the county, the underlying statutory authority that that's based upon gives you authority to prohibit dogs running at large in the entire county or in specific areas of the county. You've chosen through your ordinance to identify certain areas in the county that that prohibition applies to, and you've identified those areas by subdivisions, specific neighborhoods that are, you know, fairly modern, modern subdivisions. The issue with the case, the matter that was brought to you all at last month's meeting arose out of a neighborhood that is not an identified subdivision as we understand them to be, sort of. It's more of a, an area, it's over in the Remo area. It's not a, not a defined area, it's just more of a neighborhood. So in order to include that in your ordinance, if you chose to do that, we would have to figure out some way to define that geographic area, put some parameters around it, so it could be known by law enforcement and the courts where that prohibition was, if you chose to impose a prohibition on or require a leash for dogs in those areas. So we're working on that, working with staff to try to determine how to define that area in a way that would not be deemed too vague for enforcement purposes. So we can discuss it more in closed session, but that's what we're working on and we'll hopefully be able to provide more guidance here shortly. Happy to answer any questions if we can, or we can discuss it more later.
What members have any questions right now? All right. Thank you, Mr. Gregor.
Yes, sir.
Last item I have is, I know there have been some questions related to the state police inquiry. I did speak to the state police today, and they relayed to me that an agent has been assigned to the particular case, but it's still in the inquiry stage right now. And I'll provide any updates in the future that I obtained to the board.
All right.
That's all I have.
So, thank you, Ms. Tadlock. All right. Committee reports? All right. No committee reports. Board supervisors items, approval of check register, gentlemen? You have any time, chance to review that?
Move with approval.
All right. Do I have a motion, have a second?
A second.
All right, got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye or against? All right. Board comments? We'll start with Mr. Fisher.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is, we had spoken once or twice regarding the check register for the school board. I would like to see that check register made, made available to us either at our regular meetings or at preferably ahead of time, whichever it could be done.
All right. All right.
Sir, I think that was provided last week. Have I not provided that?
Think it's in, I think it's in the package.
I didn't see it.
It's in there.
It's in there?
It's in there, but you got, you got fifteen other items to.
Tell him one more then.
Yeah. At least, I spoke wrong. I think it's close to twenty. All right.
Yeah. Well, I would like to get it to where I can find it.
I'll work on that.
Okay.
I'll work on it, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr. Fisher?
That's all I have, I think.
Mr. Brand?
Oh, man, I got to move three or four pages. Oh.
There goes your break, Mr. Long.
Yeah, no break tonight.
That's right.
In preparation for the twenty twenty-seven budget, I think before anything goes out, the board needs to have a meeting. We all know that we're going to face a difficult year. And we need to sit down and really have a good, good conversation on what we're going to be able to afford this year and not afford, and have those expectations sent out to all the department heads. We need to review and get a list of all contracts for this county. I'll use this as an example, the grass cutting contract. When is it time to come up again for bids? Maybe it's time to bid it again. But we need to look at this stuff in preparing a budget. We haven't been doing it. We need to give it expectations. It's going to be a tight year. You know, you're going to have people in different departments going to want two or three different staff members. Can we afford that this year or not? So we need to put that up front. I'd rather not go another year and not be able to provide pay increases, but we need to have those discussions. We need to have some good discussions on health insurance. I know we've, we've gathered information on health insurance, but we need to have a discussion. What kind of information has come back on this? And I think before we start sending anything out to any department heads and asking them for budget information, we need to know what we're looking for and what we can afford, what's reasonable. Takes a lot of time to get the county budget prepared and you're looking at, at requests that you know you can afford right now. And it's, it's going to be impossible to do a lot of this stuff if we don't give the expectations to the department heads and what we can afford, what we can do and we can't do. So I'd like to see that meeting before we get too deep into the twenty twenty-seven budget.
Ms. Tadlock, have you started on any proposals for health insurance and so on?
We've submitted the, or advertised the RFP. The RFPs are due October twenty-second.
So they're due back when?
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second.
Yes, sir.
All right, we need scheduled meeting right after that.
Okay. Second thing I got, November's right around the corner, and I've been asked this several times, and I'm not here to promote one way or the other, this referendum on appointed school board, but if it's passed, what are we going to do? Do we have a plan? What is the plan? What is the process? People want to know. The public needs to know. They deserve to know. Right now, we're behind the eight ball because we don't have a plan. We need to sit down and we need to have a discussion on that. If it's, like I said, if it passes, we got to have a plan. What's that process?
Yep, we can, we can set time, side talk, but all we need to do is set a meeting.
I mean, I've had a lot of public asking, you know, what's your game plan? We should have had something, something in the paper.
You know it by yourself. I have people, I can't go to the store without people asking me about it, and we need to lay it out step by step in the event that the referendum goes through. If it doesn't, so be it. But it also needs to be stated clearly that we're not supporting or are we against the referendum at all. It's strictly informational. That's my opinion.
What's your opinion, Mr. Gregor?
The governing body is authorized by Virginia statute to issue an informational statement to be published in a newspaper with circulation in the county or on your website or both concerning objective information about the referendum issue. And you could include, you know, if, if this were to be approved, this would be the process or this would be the next steps. We have a closed session item on your agenda tonight to discuss that with you. So we're looking forward to sharing more information with you about that and also about the actual process that would be recommended for the county to follow should that referendum referendum be approved.
Okay.
What else you have, Mr. Brand?
That's all I got. I think that's enough.
Don't you have a long list?
No, I'll, I'll take it easy. I don't want to.
Okay. Ms. Tyler, I don't know if as I'm permitted, who's cleaning up the highway, they're doing a good job, so we'd like to send thanks to them. Who's cleaning up?
Probably contracts through VDOT.
Okay, well, we need to, they're doing a good job and it's well-meeted. They're working hard. So whoever responsible, we need to send them a lot of thanks. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Williams?
I don't have anything. I think it's time for a quick break, Mr. Haney.
Now, when the, when the young one says it's time.
I don't have anything really right now, but I think we need to take about a ten-minute break and we'll be back, ten minutes or less.
We're going to hold you to that, didn't we?
I'd rather hold it for the less because it's twenty-five to eight and we need to get moving.
Sounds good.
All right. First item tonight would on, would be the public comment period. Only have one person here, Patrick O'Brien.
Here he comes. First person to speak tonight is Patrick O'Brien on the public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got really two questions. The first has to do with an article in the Virginia Mercury about the county repaying two hundred and forty-some thousand dollars to the Department of Education, two hundred and forty-three thousand, six oh seven, eighty, for funds that were not used for special education. Two questions. Was the payment actually made? And secondly, what was the money used for if not for special education?
Ms. Tadlock, if you want to comment on that, because I know the money that was back in twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
That was the MOU that they failed to.
That was the MO, yes, sorry.
Yeah, that was MOU, M-O-E. That was back in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The money.
A large discussion on its top in March, March fifteenth.
Yeah. That money was paid back from the understanding that I got from Dr. Leslie.
Well, it was covered just the last week in the Virginia Mercury. Is there any indication of what the money was actually used for, if not for special education?
I did not get that information, and she was not going to be able to be here tonight to give us that information.
Well, I appreciate it if that question could be raised. It may be a late in the game, but why do our expenditures actually go down by that much money? It's an election year, there are all kinds of rumors blowing around. Well, I'd like to get a straight answer if that's possible.
All right.
The second set of rumors has to do with large-scale solar projects. There are various rumors going around about possible industrial-scale solar farms being placed in the county. I was wondering if that was a rumor, if there's any substance to it. Has anybody been looking at bringing solar farms to North Farnborough County? Open question to the board and to the county.
Well, there hasn't, there hasn't been anything approved.
That's correct.
That's correct.
This is more or less.
Now, what people might be talking about behind the bushes down the road, I don't know.
You haven't heard any?
Sometime back I heard some, yes.
Nothing's come before the planning commission.
There's nothing on the table, no applications that I know anything about. We were, we were, we asked that any applications that were brought into the county.
asked that any applications that were brought into the county building and zoning office be brought to our attention immediately, and I have not seen none. The board, have you seen any?
Maybe you need to get Mr. Marston to answer that question.
The only project is the one that was emailed you in regards to the emergency operation plan that was currently being reviewed and they were having meetings on, but a conditional use application has not been filed with the county for any utility-scale solar projects.
That one was in Waukesha, I'm in charge.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have you had any inquiries?
No, sir. Not since. And with that correspondence, everything was going to come to the board. Any inquiries that I did receive will come to the board.
Thank you, sir.
And all members of the board supervisors have received you, of course? Can I take it?
I, I have had an inquiry, yes, I have.
Could you expand on that?
It was in, going to be in the Eastfield area. I'm not sure I want to say much more than that, but I have had an inquiry. I've had, actually, a couple, actually, from different folks.
But, you don't want to discuss it any further?
I don't think that would be appropriate. I think once it got to the county's desk, then we could discuss it.
I didn't hear what you were saying.
I said, I'm not sure that would be appropriate until, until some paperwork was filed. And that discussion that I had with these people has been months ago. They've certainly had time to get an application in through the county by now.
Well, I have, I have nothing further.
All right. I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak? Got many people on tonight? All right, would anyone that's online tonight like to speak in the public comment period? All right, since, since no one wants to speak, I'll close the public comment period with thee. All right, next would be our public hearings. We have one tonight, a request by Lauren Foiles. Mr. Marston, would you take that?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Lauren Foiles and Jeanette Durquizou, owners for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on properties owned R3 residential restricted. The property is shown as tax map parcel 45B, double circle 3-1-14, and is located at 164 Bay Shore Avenue.
Board members having any questions before, before Mrs. Foiles gets up? Come on up, ma'am. Both of y'all come on up if you want. Hello, how you doing? All right, could you just tell us what you're interested in doing?
Yes, we just purchased a home in Fleet Beach community in late July. We've been here probably about eighty percent of the time since we purchased the home. Pretty hard place to leave in the summertime. And we are looking to do short-term rental on occasion to help offset some of the costs of having new homeowners in the area. So we met with the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of weeks ago. They're very helpful, lots of great guidance from them. And we're just looking to follow all of the processes in this process to do this the right way by all the county rules and regulations. So that's why we're here today.
All right. Any board members have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, well, let me, let us open the public hearing and, and we'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. I have no one on the sign-up sheet that signed up to speak on this hearing. Would anyone like to speak? Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I sit on the planning commission. I was present for the presentation these ladies made. They went to extraordinary, extraordinary efforts to consult with the neighbors and have a wonderful working relationship, which was I Y. I assume no, no neighbors appeared tonight to object to it. Under those circumstances, the planning commissioner recommended the board supervisors approve their application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone that's online tonight like to speak on this public issue? Is that anybody? Would anyone online like to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Marston, would you read the, read the conditions?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, ordinances, or rules concerning taxes, including transient occupancy tax. A smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector shall be located in each bedroom and in any other location required by the building code. There shall be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no on-street parking. The vacation home rental shall have an access driveway to a state highway with a sufficient 12-foot width, 12-foot height, and condition to accommodate emergency services, vehicles, and equipment. Vacation home rental shall register and maintain registration with the county's registry annually while operating. Vacation home rental shall register a local manager who possesses the authority and ability to promptly address and correct any violations of the conditions, use requirements, and/or limitations applicable to the vacation home rental with the building and zoning office and the sheriff's office. This registry shall include the name, address, and telephone number of the local manager, and this shall also be posted in a conspicuous area of the vacation home rental. The vacation home rental's boundary line shall be clearly marked and identified for the occupants of the rental home. Recreational vehicles may be parked on the property but may not be used by guests for living quarters during their stay at the vacation home rental. Renters' pets shall be kept under control at all times. Overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons per residence. This conditional use permit is non-transferable and does not attach to the property if ownership changes. There shall be no golf cart used by the renters on the roads, and the applicant shall maintain liability insurance.
All right. More have any questions or comments on that?
Got a question. Number 12. Why is that there? The no, no golf cart used by the renters on the roads. Does that have something to do with Fleaton Beach Estates or...?
That condition was based upon the correspondence that we received when we require conditional use permits in R3 zoning, and, and then applied to the other two vacation rentals that are in Fleaton Beach.
It does already apply to other rentals, okay.
But the owners can operate golf carts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's county-designated? They have a permit through the county to do that?
I believe so, yes. I'm not 100% positive, but I believe so.
The subdivision's probably designated as a golf cart community, but I can look that up for you real quick.
So property owners don't have a problem with using a golf cart, only guests?
Only guests, yes, sir.
All right. That answer your question?
It does, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, ladies, you have any other closing statements? And are these conditions susceptible? Okay. All right, so what's the pleasure, the board?
A move that we approve. This motion is made in due consideration of the administrative record before the body, including the planning commission's deliberations and recommendation. The information received via the public hearing, including statements offered by staff, the applicant, and members of the public, the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices, and the body's legislative prerogative, and pursuant to the body's statutory authority. And I move that we approve.
Subject to the conditions.
With the conditions?
With all the conditions, yep.
I have a question. All right. Yes, in regard to the golf carts, these two ladies can use the golf cart if they choose to.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah. All right, I got a motion to have a second.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second, to have any of discussion now. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against. Ladies, you all approved. All right, thank y'all for coming. All right, I have no more public hearings tonight. The next item would be convening the closed meeting.
Need a motion that the North Homeland County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711a1, for the discussion consideration of personnel matters; Section 2.2, 3711a8, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel on an alley abandoned, leash, law ordinance, dangerous dogs, property access, and potential results of school board referendum. Also, Section 2.2, 3711a29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where a discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The body to attend the closed meeting is necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, and assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.2, 3712a.
All right, gentlemen, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Got a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All right, aye. All against? All right, we are now in closed meeting. Thank everyone for coming. Thank...